Try to. We will try to get a a judgment.
Okay.
Uh from them in advance of a hearing, so.
Works for me.
Okay, aside from that, um I feel like we are. Far enough along here where we can, we can move to a public hearing. We'll deem the, basically, we need to deem the application complete. And um and then set a date for the public hearing.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. It's, I think it's time to, if anyone's got problems to hear from.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just do this thing.
Okay.
I think the only other small item too was the E A F. Um I thought you had submitted one, but um I guess there's, we're not seeing one on the file and uh. So if you did submit one, it could just resubmit it, if not, uh.
I think I can. Probably forward that, I wanna say someone did the environmental assessment.
Yeah.
Oh, is that the same thing as a secret?
Yeah.
Okay, they filled out something like that, I can forward it, um.
Okay.
But we're still.
Yeah, I'd like I said, I thought I had seen.
There's a waiting spot from the water and sewer department, I know I contacted them on behalf of. Of the advocate at well.
Yeah, I think we're, we're just mentioning, I think, although it doesn't block second hearing, but we'll, we'll in a. I think the next possible date for a hearing is the wealth, I think. Which is about three weeks, that gives us some time to to beat down some doors, um to see, see what information we can dig up. So in terms of, oh, well, so first, let's um, I guess, let's uh. Um, I didn't wanna like make a motion to deem the application of first subdivision at sixties Belvedere complete.
I will make a motion that the subdivision uh for six Belvedere, East Belvedere is complete.
Second.
All in all favor, hi. Uh, all right, um, so in terms of scheduling hearing, I suggest we just schedule it for the next available time, which is September twelve.
Um. I will not be here, I have a business conference.
I will.
You will be here.
I'm sure.
Okay, so we have two other members, they probably will be available, but we should double check, um. They do have kids in school, so they're anchored to some degree, um. We'll tentatively schedule it for now and just pending availability of the other members.
All right, can I pay them to be here?
They ain't filled my spike.
Actually, you can, you can't pay them to be here, but you could reward them afterwards for showing us.
Seriously, you know what it is, and and again, I I appreciate you guys, like, you know, help, like, helping so much, cause. The woman that bought the house already sold, I didn't tell her to sell their house, but she already sold her house, so she's waiting for, she's like in this limbo, and I'm like, all right, I know, I know, we're trying, we're trying.
Yeah, um, so, uh, in terms of things that that's. Um, so I think, assuming we can confirm, we have the E A F, I think we're, we're good on all the documents going into the. To the hearing pending, you know, an update to the bulk table potentially, um. Uh, in terms of who to no notify, um, I think we'll get you a a full list, but just so you know, I I think that we're, we're gonna look at all the Belvedere, all the East Belvedere residences. Um, Palbein, uh, uh, School District and um. Uh, the houses that are on ninety nearby, which is like forty-one, forty-eight, fifty-two, fifty-four Morris, and then. The houses that are on the other side on West Belvedere. And I think, I think that covers most everyone, I think the requirement is everyone within three hundred feet, um, so, you know, it's a, that's pretty close to that.
Okay.
Um, and the, what we'll, basically, it's on um us to publish the notice, um, ten days in advance. Make sure that's um publicly posted, uh, it's on you to send out notices of of the hearing to. Uh, these residents and provide proof of um notice through certified mail um receipts. And Abigail can can help with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
No.
Thanks, Abigail.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, uh, I think we're, just because this is a rare thing, and um I just wanna make sure everyone's informed, I think the board will um. Send notice to the village board, uh, the fire service and the water and sewer service, we'll still be trying to talk to them anyway, but that's official, like, hey, you've. You've been notified, this is happening.
Okay.
Uh, kind of thing, so, um, any questions or?
Um, no, I think, um, I think we're good, you know what, I do have one question, um, with just the street in general.
Yeah.
Have you guys made any headway on that, just so I can, uh, I can, um, bring it back to all the neighbors?
Uh, no, that's out of the scope of this, of this board, um, uh, for the purpose of this hearing, we're treating that the, um, the road as private.
Yeah, because we don't know others.
Yeah.
Um, but I I understand that there are other, other ambiguities that that are being tried to work out.
All right.
Um, so yeah, you can tell the other residents that we don't have an opinion.
Okay, they don't sell product insofar as we're trying to determine for you.
Yeah.
What the status is for this, for this particular subdivision.
Okay. Um. Okay, um. That's it with respect to sixties Belvedere. We can move on.
Great, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah.
See you. Bye, see you soon, Abigail.
Okay, uh, next, uh, we'll business for one forty-three, one forty-five Main Street. Uh, which change of use to um kind of personal health services, like spa, acupressure, facial skin care, et cetera, do we have representative? Uh. For that application here?
You've been muted? Yes, I'm here.
Okay, uh, welcome, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Um, we, we received um some new materials from you today, uh, thanks for sending those over. Uh. Um, uh, I was not here last time, apologies, so I'm, I may ask some questions that have uh already been covered a little bit, um, so please pardon me for that. So.
Yeah, it's okay.
Um. Can you, um, can you help me, um, understand, like, generally, like, how many customers you expect to be at the establishment at the same time?
Uh, same time, maybe four or five.
Four, five, and how many worker, and how many workers would you expect around at 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 the same time?
Same time?
Yeah.
Six, maybe three.
Three, okay.
Total every day, maybe we hope, um, the owner hopes is like ten.
Ten workers?
Mm-hmm, no, ten customers.
During the whole day.
Oh, ten customers across the whole day and a maximum of four at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, you said three workers at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Yeah, we, we are new to this town, so we don't know how many visitors.
Sure. Yeah, I, I, only because I'm not a a frequenter of, uh. Reflexology and acupressure places, I don't, I don't have a good uh intimate understanding of of how, what the, um. Oh, turnover is for customers in terms of, over the course of a day, so that, that was helpful, thank you. Um. Um, so I saw in the pictures, um, that you shared, um, wh- where, where do you expect the trash to be located? Um.
Back of the.
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Uh, just as same as the first floor, uh, first store, where do they put, we just put the same place, same location.
And we're, just be- because it's not clear on these pictures, where, where is that exactly?
I think it's in front of the store, the first, on, on the main street.
On the main street, okay, on main street, great.
Yeah, I walk.
And, uh, what do you expect the operating hours to be?
Nine to nine.
Nine to nine. And I saw in your picture of. The back door or the, the, the main door, there is a light, is that light, um. Uh, like triggered by, um, light, like the available, like, uh, motion, I'm sorry, time of day or. The brightness outside or motion or anything like that, or is it a manual switch?
Manual.
Manual switch, okay. And it looks like there's a, there is existing parking in the back, is that right?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, it's a little hard to see from these pictures, but but if you had to guess about how many cars could sit back there, what would you say?
I think two.
Two cars?
All right, thanks.
Yeah. And I think they're the very easy on the street parking.
Yeah, it's a, uh, it's surprisingly contentious, maybe not surprisingly, it is a contentious issue around here, because street parking is so, um, is. Depending on the time of day and the time of week, it can be very contended, uh, so that's one reason why, um, parking is often a, us, uh, in, in the set of questions that we have.
Mm-hmm, it's, um, cause usually, um, customer come just to spend a one hour. Uh, so, like, meter parking is also, it's okay for them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's not like New York City, it's very rare place to park or very expensive, so I think parking for customers, um, not a big problem.
Okay. Um, on parking for the board, um, this use is not in the parking table, so it'll, it'll be at our discretion to kind of.
Okay.
Figure out what, what an appropriate amount is for this use.
Yeah, I mean, it's all, there's, it's all within that, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, the town can assign, um, specific place, say, oh, you park here. I think we just follow the town's rules, uh, it's okay.
Yeah, so the, uh. The, uh, so we have, for the town, the town has, um, uh, on-street parking, which is paid on Main Street. And then, uh, there's off-street parking available for some buildings, your building happens to have off-street parking, which is great, is it not, and it's not true for all, all buildings. Um, so, um, um, I suspect that, uh, the board will come to a. Small, uh, but probably reasonable and probably met, uh, by the current conditions, uh, so I, I wouldn't worry too much about it.
And and you're gonna be allowed to use those, uh, spaces behind the building, they're not for the, the first floor center?
I'm sorry, say it again?
Are you allowed, are you currently allowed, uh, use of the, of the, um, parking in the back?
Yes.
Your business, okay. Um. I've, I've been kind of monopolizing here, and any other?
Yeah, well, I mean, from the last time, um, um, I think both, Ben, uh, gets credit for. Uh, noting that, um, in the evening hours, especially in the winter, uh, that it would be very dark. On the, um, alleyway and, uh, right where the door is, um, and, um. Some kind of lighting plan, uh, for people that are walking in from the street to get back around would be, uh, important. The, uh, another thing is that. For signage, uh, their plan and, and tell me if, and if I misstate this, um, please correct me. Uh, they want a, one of the, uh, there's a photo of it, a.
Yeah.
A sandwich sign, uh, that they put out on the sidewalk, uh, during open hours, and. I have no earthly idea of what the rules are on that kind of thing. I mean, I know, I've been seeing more and more of them.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I don't actually have a good sense of what the.
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head, unless the code explicitly says no sandwich boards on the sidewalk, probably something we have to defer to it right now.
Yeah.
Uh, on the first, first floor, the store, last time I went there, I saw they put sandwich board on the sidewalk in front of their store. So we, and we think maybe just put the sandwich board on the entry, uh, going to the back, cause the entry is. Back, so we just, we don't, we want to block people to walk on the main street.
Yeah, um, sounds good, I think, I think, to echo a concern that you just brought up, I think that the lighting, the lighting is also the biggest concern I have, I think that.
Uh, the light, we can, uh, just comply with the town's rules. To see, uh, if it in the dark winter time, how. How do they require we just install that kind of light, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, the, uh, you're, you're basically, you're talking to the people who, who are, or who care, uh, about those things right now, um. So I think from my perspective, if you could provide at least a little bit of an indication of how you might solve. Cause like, if you're, it may open till ten, till, till nine P M, in the winter, that, that's basically three hours of, of pretty full darkness. Uh, while you're expecting customers to walk back there, and, um, so I think that having, um, even if it was. Uh, some type of, um, you know, LED, uh, you know, light, uh, like, um, time of day. Uh, activated or, or light sensitive activated, um, light that was back there, I think that would make a big difference for. The, the safety of, um, of that entrance.
Um. So maybe we just add lights, um, on the edge of the window, so, uh, customer can see the entry. And can see the sandwich board.
Uh, I think that the, like, the. Um, the mi- the main concern I have is because this is gonna be facing, the entrance is basically facing away from the street, right? So the light, the kind of ambient light that's on the street is gonna, is not even, is gonna basically be casting a shadow. In this, in this back area, so I think, in whatever the plan is, like, I think, I'm, with the board is willing to entertain. A variety of plan, I'm not here to tell you what the right, what the right solution is, but I think from our, from what I'm hearing from our perspective is that. Having a specific plan about how this area around the entryway is gonna be, is gonna be lit well enough. But it doesn't, it doesn't feel, uh, like a, you know. Like a dark alley, uh, is the, is the main, is the main goal here, so I think if you, if you can, um, submit to the board a plan about the lighting, that would be really helpful.
Uh, okay.
Okay.
Hmm, yeah, but you know, like, the. Hmm. It's been, what, I know the board meeting is once a month, and, uh, it's already a past woman's. I mean, is it, is it possible I can just send the picture to you and, uh, then you can approve, um. Not for the next board meeting, because the owner, I'm not the owner, she just worry about paying the rent and no business there.
Yeah, I, I, I totally get that, and, and.
And, uh, and the owner also, um, um, say the. Only short term for the grace period time.
Sure.
Uh.
Yeah, I, 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 I get that, and we're, we're, um, just so you know, the, the, the parts of, I don't know if this was talked about last time or not, but the, the general process. That every, every new business that, that, that is changing a use in the village of Fallspring has to go through.
Or maybe, I, I can come to the town to talk to the person who's in charge of the lighting. Uh, so I can get some idea, how do they want us to install the light, cause right now I have no idea.
Yeah, I under- I understand that, and I, and, and, uh, there is no, there is no person in charge of the light in the village.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion would be to, well, for this time of year, maybe come by like at eleven o'clock at night. And see how dark it is back there, and I think the concern is not the lighting of the door, it's the path. From the sidewalk to the back door, uh, you have a photo that has like a mailbox on the right-hand edge. And it's a photo that goes down the, uh, down the driveway alley, um. I think our, my concern is, uh, somebody that, uh, walking to, uh, to your place. Uh, their safety in getting.
We. Understand, so, uh, the owner will install the light on the entry. And also do some ad- advertisement on the stairs, so you can see the, uh, the name of the store. Uh, contact, make appointment of phone number, um, those lights, I will, uh. Maybe take some picture of other stores and this email to Abigail.
So, I don't know if you, uh, you, I guess what I'm talking about is, there's a photo that you sent to, I guess, today?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, recent, very yesterday or today, and it has one building on the left-hand side. And then, uh, your building on the right-hand side, it's taken from the sidewalk, looking back to the back of the building. And it is, my concern is the, uh, the walking, uh, somebody walking from the sidewalk. To the back, not the lighting of the back, but it's getting from the sidewalk. To the back door, some kind of path level lighting, uh, we had, uh, one, uh, what was it, one thirty-three?
Yeah.
Where he had, um, lights that were like a foot off the ground, uh, and just cast. Uh, a light on the pathway, so that where you could see where you were walking, cause, um. Uh, you know, there's snow, there's ice, uh, there's uneven, it's an uneven surface, and my concern is the walk.
Yeah, so, uh, I think we can, um, install the lights. On the, um, see, on the, on the, on the side of the building.
Yeah.
Uh, pointed to the entry, not pointing, sorry, pointed to the sidewalk, so people can see it, just like, uh, uh, street lamp.
Yeah, so I, I think, like I said, we're, we're open to a lot of, uh, of, of propose, different solutions here, the, the. The goal will be to make sure that the, that the entirety of the path from the sidewalk to your door is well lit when it is dark.
Okay.
That's the goal, this board, I think, will have a tough time approving this application. Without that solution being in place. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, and we, it doesn't have to be in place before we approve, like, it can just be a plan, you can just present, like, you know. Uh, here's the lighting we're gonna use, and here's where we're gonna install it, like, if you can provide that to us, that will be sufficient. At least to help us understand what your, what your plan is, and, uh, and then we can go from there. Um, in terms of the broad timeline, um, we have, I think, you know, I, I, I think we have most of the pieces. That we need, um, to move forward with the exception of this lighting plan, I think that's the thing. That is, uh, I think most pressing with, with, with the rest of the board.
Yeah, I, I.
That's the only thing pressing.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the use of the spaces, uh, I mean, it's gonna have some massage tables, and I mean, but. There's no, no build out.
Yeah.
And, you know, so, but yeah.
Uh, I haven't seen what was received today, but did we get an actual site plan, uh, even just a drawing?
We got a drawing of the interior.
Okay.
Um, and we have pictures of the exterior.
No.
Um, so I think, uh. Yeah, I, I think it's a question of exactly how.
Yeah, I mean, I think it probably, since the, the ingress and egress aren't issue, I think the drawing probably should show.
Yeah.
Some of the exterior as well, um.
That's fair.
But it's up to the board whether you guys think that there's enough to, to move forward.
Okay, um, yeah, I think ideally. Uh, in ad- in addition to that lighting plan, the, you know, you have this, um, floor plan that you have provided, which is great, of the interior. Um, it would be great to have a similar kind of drawing that includes that exterior. Uh, just so we know kind of like the orientation of where's the, where's the sidewalk, where's the driveway, where's the entryway? And then how does it relate to what's inside?
Parking to.
And, and.
And the garbage.
And the parking and the garbage, um, so ideally, all that's in, in one drawing at the same time. Uh, we have the lighting plan that would, that is, uh, uh, important, uh, that we discussed. And, um, I think if, do those seem like things that you can provide this board? Are you willing to provide those things?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I said, um. Can we do at the same time, uh, like?
So what, what, what I'm willing, what I'm willing to do is suggest to this board that given, if you feel like you understand what we need.
Yeah, I, and draw the exterior, um, picture, and I put, uh, where to. Put the, uh, trash bin and, uh, where to put the lights, where to put the sandwich, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
That would be great.
But it may not, may not a very professional picture, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine, the one you did was just great.
Yeah, it, it, as long as, it, you know, si- similar to the, to the one you provided, um, just including that, that exterior information, that would be helpful. Um, so, um. I personally would be willing to move to a public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, given the assurance that we'll get that information, um, let's say, within the next ten days.
Okay.
Okay, the, the, uh, do you think you can do that?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I, I think, um, we can, in that case, we can deem the application complete.
Sure.
Would you like to make a motion there?
Um, move that, uh, we view, uh, one forty-three, one forty-five Main Street's application as complete.
You wanted to say.
Condition on getting a, a plan, uh, an exterior plan. That, uh, shows the parking in the back, the lighting along the side, the location of the trash can. And where the sandwich board's gonna be.
Great.
Uh, do you mind, I thought I take picture? Then I pointed out where to put those stuff, that will be helpful?
It would be helpful, but we really need the drawing.
Oh, okay, I understand.
A drawing that's basically the whole lot, put the building in it, and then show where the parking is in the back. And where you're going to put the lights on the side.
Okay, got you, mm-hmm, thank you.
My second?
All in favor, uh, okay, um, I think we schedule it for, for next time, um. And for the twelfth?
Yeah.
And, uh, so in terms of moving to a, a, a public hearing. Uh, we'll, of course, like I said, we'll need that new, that new material within, uh, the next, uh, ten days, if we don't, we don't get it, we'll probably just cancel the public hearing. So we won't be able to move forward, uh, so please provide that in a timely manner, um.
Okay.
Additionally, um, uh, we will, uh, we will work with you just to let you know what addresses you need to. Note notify of the, of the public hearing, it'll be basically the surrounding, um, the surrounding businesses, uh, and, and residences. And, um, I think that's it?
Yeah.
Any, what, any other questions before we go?
Hmm, I'm, I'm fine, I understand now, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, bye-bye.
Bye. Okay. Okay.
If she had any follow-up questions, can she call anybody?
Oh, me.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that a legitimate?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, we've spoken before, um.
I think, I I think I'm I made a phone call either yesterday or today and we've spoken, she doesn't live locally, so it's very difficult. Um, but yeah, if she needed any assistance or clarity.
Procedural clarity is always, is always fine to give uh.
Okay.
It's just a matter of, you know, uh you know. Anything beyond that in terms of like how the board feels about an application or or, you know, that that those are those are out of out of scope, but but anything.
But you work with her to do the the certification about the address?
Yes, I will give her the address. Well, let's let's say, for example, she supplies within seven days most of what we asked. But she forgot to put uh on her schema- on her um drawing where the garbage can is or something. Do we go back and say, oh, you forgot this, or we wait for the meeting?
I think, I think no, I think it's, I think it's fine for Abigail to represent what was asked for.
Hmm.
And what might be missing, given what was asked for.
Um.
Um, but at the end of the day, if we get to the hearing and we don't have. What we need, then it is what it is, and we'll have to make a determination given that, so.
Yeah, I think if it's something obvious, um then Abigail can inform the applicant that there's something missing. But if there's, if it's not really clear, then.
Yeah.
Wait till the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, uh we're on to the business of forty Main Street. Um. So, um can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll do this one.
I'd like to make a motion to open public hearing for um. Yes, forty west uh forty Main Street.
Great, uh, there?
What?
Oh, second, sure, yeah, all in favor? Hi. Our public hearing is open, um. Have to read the notice, so we all know what we're talking about.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um, so do we have the notice?
Oh.
Upstairs.
Not strictly required.
Right.
Um, to read the, to read the notice.
Right.
Uh so uh we can dispatch with it for now, I think. Everybody knows uh what why why we're here, what we're talking about, it's change of use uh for forty Main Street um to Jim. Um. All right, um. Firm the clerk um has notice been timely published in the official newspaper?
Yes.
Uh has the applicant provided proof of mailing to affected parties?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Read these. Has the notice received any comment by the public, either in writing or email or in person? Um, I don't think we've made a secret determination for this.
No, yeah, no.
Um, so uh, I think uh, um. I'll make a motion to the the determine this is a type two action under seeker. Second?
All in favor?
I, I. Um, okay, um now to the meat of it. Uh it would be great uh if uh one of you uh just kind of walk the public through what it is you'd like to do. Uh the board has obviously heard a lot of this before, but most of this is for the public's benefit to know uh what's being proposed and. Um, some of the stuff that uh uh some of the details that we uh we've worked on and and workshop.
Yeah, so we'd like to open uh gym at the retail A on forty Main Street. Um, the gym, it's uh similar to concepts that exist elsewhere and that it's on staff. But we'll have various like access control security features, um including like um. It's basically a monthly membership, right? And and you'll be able to book through website or through app. Um, it's not a kind of show up at any time, you'll you'll have specific times and specific slots. That that members will be able to to book one of the the pods or the stations, we expect to have three stations. Um, given the square footage. And then, you know, a lot of the things that the board had brought up during our planning meetings, uh. So stuff like uh cameras, we'll have cameras recording. Um, you know, the door will be um only accessible um by by members with unique key codes. Um, in terms of fire, there's uh it's up to code already, the entire building and that they'll be, you know, fire extinguishers. Um, as well as like emergency phone for uh that'll go to the police or that that will go to the fire station, stuff like that. So, um, yeah, five AM to midnight is the is the current plan. And uh, I think that's kind of a a general overview. Um, it's really a a a place for the village, for people who live in the village, who live both in village of Cold Spring. You know, potentially, um Phillips Town, Nelsonville, obviously Garrison, you know, the the nearest sort of full-service gym. We're we're not really a full service, we have a pool, we have a basketball courts, I can pick a ball or whatever. Is is up in Allsport, you know, or or up in Fishco is twenty minutes away. The idea is, you know, uh it's walkable, right? A lot of people in the village, they don't have, you know, basements or garages or stuff like that. This was something that we felt that we wanted ourselves and uh right to to have like the ultimate kind of home gym. But but that is, you know, more than we can use just ourselves, right? So yeah, three people at a time is what we're expecting, uh memberships capped, probably in base one seventy seventy people. Um, just to, you know, avoid uh, there's only so many hours a week, you know, multiplied by three stations, so. Um, that's that's a quick overview, any other uh detail or questions, I think we. We submit everything with some detail in in our PowerPoint and in different documentation.
This uh this is on the website.
Have you ever run a business like this before, or is this your first time?
Uh I mean, I've run other businesses, like uh online businesses, and so that that side of it, uh retail, I've not run retail before.
Or a a gym facility?
Yeah, I mean, my wife, I mean, she talks, she's been part, she's like the gym person. I'm like the more the business person, but we've never run like a retail.
Okay.
Establishment, you know.
We've become a gym person? Not very subtle. Uh, okay, uh well, I'll note that, um, well, first of thanks for, thanks for running through that, um. Uh, let's see here, um. All right, let's move on to uh public comment. So, um, if there's any members of the public, um, so please, uh I'll open in a second, um. Time for comments, um, the process here is to state your name and address for the record. Um, a reminder that questions should always be addressed to the board, not to the applicant. Um, the board may refer those questions to the applicant for clarification, does not require to do so. Um, we don't have to answer any of questions specifically unless it's procedural. Um, and uh I don't think we have any ready comments, so. All right, so I'll I'll open the, open the floor to any members of the public who'd like.
I came here to learn about this thing, so uh I'm wondering, so my name's Nick Taylor, I live in Nelsonville, actually, uh Armel Drive. And I was wondering about just the layout of the gym and the equipment that you're planning to have in there. Um, you know, what sorts of stuff are you gonna have in there?
Um.
What machines?
Yeah, like just is it gonna be like, you know, big, like elaborate, you know, fitness? Huge devices or it's just like a like a weight weight rack, like?
Yes, so the details are in the um the present, the PowerPoint presentation, it's on the on the village website right now. Um, my understanding that is that um, there are um, based on the 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 render, there's. Um, uh kettlebells, free weights, um bikes, uh racks.
Where can I find it on the site?
Um, if you go to current applications and also, yeah.
Just what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Thank you, and and uh so if I can.
Of course.
Sure, if you like a comment.
I mean, as part of the process, we be having, I haven't started marketing it, right? It's it's one of these things where this is the first step of the process, we get the change of, change of use. And the second step is kind of, um, actually, we'll be doing like a pre-sales process, like to get committed membership, and we're not gonna.
Seems like you have interested parties.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is great, and we've talked to people and um and so it's we're we're actually, this is our kind of our first proposal. And we'll solicit feedback as well, like if yeah, if you know, members of the community are saying, oh, like I really. This is the type of thing that I'm always needing.
Yeah.
X, Y, Z, you know, mat or equipment or or piece of gym, this is something that we're, you know, if the one if one of those stations. We we include that equipment, that's something that we wanna do, so, yeah. I I the 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 main concept I would say is like uh weights, resistance, high intensity racks. I mean, you know, getting too in into it, you know, within the last couple of years, there's companies like Rep and Rogue have really have built these like. Very impressive, like functional trainers that are, they're sort of semi-home, but also like small commercial. You know, that it's not like your grandpa's gym type of thing.
Yeah.
Um, and it allows for like a lot of different. Uh, you know, and activities that are all in kind of all in one, right? Yeah. But 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 the primarily will be like like bars and 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 kettlebells and and free weights and and that kind of thing, right? It's it's less about, less classes in yoga, I think that there are places that have that kind of thing, right? It's more like, um, what what would you have in your in the all, in your own ultimate home garage gym, you know?
Yeah.
Um, within the constraints of that space.
Yeah. Thanks for clarifying, um, would the member of the public have uh anything to say for or against the current proposals that the board should know about?
Um, I mean, just that I'm all for it. My my wife and I actually had a very similar idea to this, and I'm happy that someone else is doing it, actually. We just, it's just, I I think it's exactly what the town needs, like he said, you have to drive twenty minutes, you know, to go to anything. So I think it would really make our Cold Spring experience complete to have something like this, so. I'm all for it.
Thanks, um I don't think we have anyone online. Uh.
Can I ask him the questions?
Uh, sure.
I'm just curious as to what time of day interest to uh for this.
What type, time of day?
Yeah.
I I usually like to go work out, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, usually in the morning, for me, we have three young kids, so um. Basically, any time, any any time you can get is good, but yeah, I usually work out in the morning.
Okay.
But I go to Peak Skill.
Oh.
Love to be a little closer to home.
Yeah.
I I sort of wanted to make a comment because I think somebody. Uh in one of the previous meetings said something about, oh, would it be, uh I don't know. Because you're up, your the business is going until midnight, that maybe the light is distracting, distracting. Uh your neighbors or something, and I was just thinking, uh you know, if anybody has an objection to that, it has an issue. That I think you could probably put some sort of inexpensive film on the inside. And that also gives your customers a little sense of privacy at the same time without, um, you know.
Too exposed.
Exactly, exactly, and I guess my other comment is, I love the name Boundary Fitness. The alliteration is great, and I love the, I love the, I love, yeah, that's all you need is 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 the name. And the graphics and you're in business. Is that yours?
Uh yeah, I I designed the logo.
Very, very nice, very cool.
Can I get a motion to close the public comment? I move, uh make a motion that we close the public comment.
Second.
Uh, all right, um, I'll I'll lead up for comments, um. So I think for me, like the, I I really appreciate how responsive the applicants have been to um. The concerns of the board and helping us both understand. What this will look like in instantiation and also making sure that the health and safety of uh. The villagers that are gonna be using this are kind of taken to account. Um, I'll also point out that because this is also not on the parking table, we will need to make a determination. About the required number of parking spaces, I think, given, um, I believe we're. Uh, you've set a maximum of three people?
It could be, it could be four, four, as a trainer.
A maximum of four, a maximum of four people uh at a time. And given that this is primarily gonna be used by village resident uh or or folks they're close by. Um, I would be open to setting the required number of spaces to zero for this particular one.
Sure.
Um, but uh I'm I'm also very much in favor of more diversity in our. Um, exercise offerings here in the village, as as someone who has been frustrated at, and like, I. I think yoga and spa and spa, these are all really great stuff, but they're, you know, I like to do other things besides those things. Uh and there have those, those options have not been available in the village, and I think this is the um. This is a great addition to the options that are available to villagers, so I'm I'm excited by it and uh. I think it's gonna be a net positive for uh the village to operate.
Yes.
Would anyone else like to make to make comment here?
Well, I'll I'll just say that, um, you know, a lot of the focus of Main Street is is visitors. Uh it's nice to have something that is uh came to locals. The deli that uh we approved, uh there, um. Uh they they are pushing a lot for the holding kids for locals. Uh I mean, granted, you know, others will leave there, but but they are putting in stuff. Uh to make uh it more comfortable for locals, so I I think that's uh that's great. And uh, yeah, I I bicycle, so I'm 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 sad.
Yeah.
So.
I made comments before, so I'm I'm in favor of.
Uh, all right, um. The our our unfortunately, our public comment period is has closed, yeah. Um.
The other thing I know that was discussed, the board discussed before, was hours of operation and um that's something that you could um. Put a limit or a cap on or not, it's it's really up to you.
And the approval?
Yeah.
Um. How does the board, how does the board feel?
Yeah, I I'm I'm, I wouldn't mind that, I mean, and and I guess if they wanted to change it. Uh if they started, if people, if they started getting people to say we wanna do it at four in the morning before we catch a train. They could always come back to us, right? Yeah, I I would, I'd be in favor of that, five to midnight, five AM to midnight and then.
That's what they've already proposed, right?
Right.
So what are, so what are we saying?
It would be, it would be codifying it as as part of the approval.
Fine, yes, yeah, yes.
Uh, all right, so I think, um. We'll need a, uh we'll need to kind of assemble the actual like languages of resolution. Um, I think it sounds like uh we can vote on his language, um, that is we, um. I uh I move to approve the application. Uh, with the conditions that uh the hours of operation are limited to um no greater than. Twelve AM to.
Five AM to twelve.
Five AM to twelve AM. Um, and uh that the parking requirements be set to zero spaces, given the usage.
I'll second that.
And as with uh every applicant, application, uh one of the conditions is always just payment of um any outstanding escrow fees or applications.
Sure.
Uh.
All in favor? Hi. Hi.
Is it?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so we'll uh Don will write up the kind of the formal uh resolution. And uh so I guess we'll we'll sign it next time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, but I got.
We should also come next, so.
Uh, no, I don't.
I mean, you don't have to. Uh the boards, public hearings close, the board's not gonna ask any more questions, so.
If you wanna come hang out, we'll be here.
It's like real estate parks and records.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll we'll uh we'll get the details ironed out next time and um. We'll just make sure to, make sure we don't, forget about it. Okay, so we'll we'll uh we'll get the details ironed out next time and um we'll just make sure to make sure we don't forget about it.
Yeah.
Um. Okay, uh I think that's all the business for the evening, so um. Uh is there any public comment? Uh Lloyd, I see you're here, would you like to make um public comment to the to the planning board on anything? Okay, uh well, thanks for attending anyway, um. Uh I don't have any board business, so uh would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh move that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that, surprisingly.
Hi.
Bye.
Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.